Bye. I'm the United States of America and to the Republic of Washington, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please. Boss?
Present.
Pippiah?
Present.
Graham?
Present.
Hughes?
Present.
Frye?
Schroller?
Here.
Drum?
Present.
Barnes?
Present.
We have a corn.
All right. The first item is the approval of minutes from March 12th. I do not have any amendments. Does anyone have amendments?
Mayor, I have a couple things.
Okay.
On page three, line four.
Yeah, so page three of the minutes or page three of the agenda?
Page three, well, page three of the agenda.
Okay.
Page two of the minutes.
All right.
Fourth line where it says...
Under which, which topic?
Audit bids.
Audit bids, okay.
Fourth line, where it says, "Single audit." Could we add, "Which is required for projects in excess of $750,000"?
Okay.
And then on...
Wait, 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 wait.
Which is required...
Say that again. Read it again, please.
Which is required for projects in excess of $750,000.
It should be using federal money in excess of $750,000.
Thank you, Austin.
You're welcome.
For federal-funded projects, is that all right?
Yes.
Money projects. Oh, we're for $750,000. Okay. What else, darling?
And then on page five of the agenda.
Okay.
Under recent, water and wastewater, number three, recent committee meeting.
Okay.
The last line, "Usage was due to the heating, steam heating system valve mistakenly left on rather than a leak."
Okay. Was due to this...
Steam heating system.
The steam heating system.
Valve mistakenly left on.
Valve.
Or turned on.
Left on. Mistakenly left on, is what you said?
Mm-hmm.
Left on. Okay. Anything else?
No.
Did anyone else have a...
I'm having a whole time here. I'm not sure how to...
Thank you, Cindy.
Oh, isn't it good?
I don't think it was my gavel. Due to the steam heating system valve left on mistakenly, left mistakenly on, valve mistakenly left on.
Here now.
Okay. So we have those are two amendments, so I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
Move approved the agenda of the regular meeting of March 12, 2018 as amended.
The minutes?
Minutes, excuse me.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. All right. Thank you for reading those. Public comments? If you would like to come and you're not on the agenda, please come to the podium, give your first and last name, your address, and your word.
I'm coming at the right time this time.
Yes, you are.
That's a good thing. I'm Catherine Lauer. I am the senior class vice president, and I'm requesting approval for the senior walk downtown for prom, April 21st, around 8:00, I think is when we've done it in the past. So anything that...
Is it just at 8:00 AM?
8:00 PM.
8:00 PM?
Yes.
Um, who was our... Kevin, do you remember if there's anything else we need to know about that? Just, do we have the police?
Yeah, police will block off the highway.
Block off the highway.
Yeah. They're not doing all sorts of anything weird this year.
Oh, that's why. Well, the other thing is what, you're gonna go down, you're walking, but what vehicles are you in?
I was just gonna ask you what you, what you thought was appropriate or...
Last year, I believe it was street legal vehicles.
Okay, street legal, and that's what you'd like to keep?
Is, are you all right with that?
Yes, I can spread them out.
So you put that, "Street legal vehicles," and so you probably, you're gonna start around 8:00, 8:00 PM?
Yes.
I keep saying 8:00 AM, 8:00 PM. And we'll have the police help. You'll be walking and using street legal vehicles. Is there anything else you wanna communicate to us?
I think that's all.
Is there anything else we need to ask of her? Okay. Are you guys all, should we have a motion to allow the prom walk at 8:00 PM on the 21st, walking and using street legal vehicles?
I move to...
So moved?
I move to allow the senior walk on, what's the date of that?
April 21st.
April 21st. And they will be walking and using street legal vehicles, and the police will be on site.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. Thank you, Catherine.
Thank you.
Looking forward to seeing all the beautiful dresses.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Move along to Jen Sillogic. You're up with the insurance premium.
I do apologize, I have a terrible cold, so bear with me here. Most of you probably know I'm Jen Sillogic with Alliance Insurance. In your pamphlets, we have my little cover letter that states your renewal is an April 1st renewal. Your property deductible has not changed, it is still the $5,000. The one thing on the general liability that has changed is the sewer backup claims. Because of the continuous frequency of sewer backup claims, they are requiring that we bump that from $2,500 to $5,000. And then the auto deductibles will stay at the 500 comprehensive and 1,000 collision. And as I stated in here, it looks like the renewal premium is coming in at $99,204, which is about $17,000 less than last year. And below that, I have given a breakout that you can see the last four years of the premiums. I did get a bid for a different property deductible, changing it to a $2,500 all peril with a $5,000 wind hail. But honestly, they get an, we are getting a lot of credits on the property side. That's why you're seeing a lot of the decrease, because on the property side, our claims have been very, very good. It's been the sewer back with, backup that's been the frequency. So anyway, there was hardly any little savings to change the deductible. And I also did the same on the auto, and you can see there was an $875 savings, which to me is not enough to have to come up with another 500 if you have a comp claim, and a lot of times those are the main ones, your dear claims. So, and also below the breakdown of the premiums, the dividend checks are based on claims throughout the industry of EMC. And you can see in the last four years also, you've gotten very, very nice dividend checks, which turns around and makes your premiums for the last four years, once you take those off, around the premium that we're at right now. I did contact Berkshire Hathaway, another carrier that is interested in cities, but at the time when I contacted them, they were not quoting any other cities at that point. So we can definitely take a look for them next year again. I did talk to my company rep on that, and we're going to actually start that process with them probably the first part of December of this year already, because they get so overloaded with quotes. And there again, I'm a very big advocate of EMC. They've done the city, I think, very, very well in the last several years that you guys have had them. I don't know that we've had any claim history, you know, problems that I'm aware of. Like I say, the main ones recently have been the sewer backup.
And how many claims have we had for sewer backup?
Every year, you pretty much have at least one. And unfortunately, the cost of them are getting higher in the last few years. I think this year you've had one already in 2018. And they haven't paid out a whole lot on that one yet, but there is still a large reserve out there. So what that means is the damages that have been brought into us already have been paid, but they have not done the repairs, you know, the completion of the repairs since it just happened a little over a month ago. So...
She told me over the phone that the claim in 2017 was a little over $6,000, the one claim that there was. And I asked her what other claims we've had overall besides the water sewer, and she said that the Kestner House Museum, remember the tree fell on it?
Yes.
And so that was the only other claim in 2017. Although, didn't we have any, a couple of vehicles?
You did.
That was on somebody else's insurance.
Oh, okay.
I was gonna say, I don't know that we had any autos last year.
Okay.
In the 17, 18 term. So, and the rates on the property side have come down also, and they, like I said, they've allowed some extra credits on because, you know, we haven't had any large claims. You know, of course, I can't guarantee if we have a large hailstorm come through this spring, you know, next year, some of those may have to come back off. But I felt very comfortable with the pricing that they came in this year with, so...
You guys have any questions about it? I'm very happy to see an $18,000 injection in estimate. And we'll just see, well, you know, whatever the dividend is.
The dividend, right.
It is. It's just up to whatever claims are paid, but... And I appreciate you contacting Berkshire Hathaway. I think, Darlene, didn't you and I, or...
Yes.
Didn't we go to a meeting and they said they did it?
To one of the reps.
And we thought EMC was the only one that did it. So at least you followed that up, and you could at least have one for a comparison purpose for us in 2019.
Yes.
So I appreciate you doing that.
Like I say, we'll start that process probably already in December, getting with them and, you know, compare everyone against EMC next year. I don't think that's a problem at all.
Okay. With that being said, I would entertain a motion to accept the EMC premium for the year beginning April 1st.
I so move.
Second? Any other further, further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. Thank you, Jen.
All right, and I appreciate it, and I do appreciate you guys keeping it local. You know, it is very nice to be able to walk across the street and come over if there's any questions, and any of you at any time, please feel free.
I told her I really appreciate her four years of data.
Thank you.
Which that doesn't surprise you at all. All right. The next item is the seasonal employees. We talked a little bit about this at the budget workshop. And just a reminder, you know, we, we did, we gave the full-time $0.62 per hour, we gave the part-time $0.30 per hour, and now just to try to make a decision, exclude, the seasonal employees, a pool already has, there's built in to how we approved the policy on that. So this is just dealing with these five employees. So what are, what would you guys like to do this year, if anything? I mean, we don't have to give them a raise, but I do think we're very blessed to have these employees that will come year after year and work for us. With that being said, at the workshop, we thought, kicked around the idea of maybe $0.15 an hour. Do you guys, that was the number kicked around then, but now it's the time to make that decision? Yes, Terry?
How many employees is this we're talking about?
Just five. Those five that are listed, John Howard, Pat Breeding, Debbie Johnson, Tote Frog, and Dennis Havig. What?
It's not that I know of.
I'm coming back, just looking for...
Okay. So it would just be these five at this time? And then if we have someone else come on board, we'll discuss their salary when they come on board?
Okay.
So does anyone wanna make the motion, or any other motion, or...
So did we decide on what, $0.15?
Well, that's what we discussed, but we didn't decide on anything. So now it's time to make that decision.
I probably wanna go $15, whatever we wanna go.
What do you want to think?
$15 is fine with me. I'll make a motion. Madam Mayor, I move that we give the seasonal employees on the current list another $0.15 an hour, I guess, raise.
Beginning, immediately?
Yeah. Cause none of them started yet, have they? Well, they have.
Well, the dump has started, and the museum will start April 1st, so you just wanna make...
Yeah, just make it immediately.
Did what, our pay date?
Right. The next appropriate pay, pay date would be great if you could just...
Build it into the...
Right, for our next appropriate...
Make it effective, starting which, what time then?
So that would be, we just had one, so would've been Sunday then.
So you wanna make it as beginning...
Effective today, then.
The 26th, effective today? Effective the... Did you say that effective today?
Effective today, the 26th, yes.
Was there a second?
I seconded.
Is any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, seven zero. Thank you very much. The next item is Dennis Mason. He looked at some of our electrical issues with Dave. It's a team, a duo.
Yeah, I'm Dennis Mason, and I was asked to participate in helping to find out why bands come into Marysville and have difficulties with electrical system we have here. And after consulting with several of them, they pointed me pretty much to a guy from Manhattan, who's kind of an expert in electricity. And he kinda steered me away from where we was going, because it wasn't ground fault was the problem. It's the overload of the capacity of the outlets that we have here. They're just, they don't, we don't have available for them to use enough current to drive these big amplifiers and speakers that they have.
And are you in agreement with that, Dave? That comment? The conclusion?
I have to, cause I don't know that knowledge.
Okay. So that would make sense to you? Okay. So based on that...
Well, we definitely have ground fault, and that's what's supposed to be there, it's code. But anyway, the power that these amplifiers, and I heard one thing, 3,500 watts of amplifier, and that's the output of the audio. And what, how much current does it draw? 50, 30, 40, 50 amps? I don't know. But what they're, what I asked the person specifically then that had that problem, he says, "Well, Concordia and other places around here have at least one 220 outlet available." And that seemed to be the solution, where simplest thing to do to just cure that one problem is to put in a 220 single-phase 50-amp plug-in. And to keep from having to have trip wires and stuff, by looking at the location and consulting with other people too, Dave, and so on, it was primarily the best to put it on the southwest corner next to that wall, behind the memorial or the...
The mural.
Murals. That would be at least the minimum. Then as we progressed with that idea, talking with Dave and Electration, he said for very little cost of just the basic requirements, you can do what they call a camper box. It has one 220 single-phase 50-amp, and another 125-volt 30-amp, and another duplex of 20-amp, 110. That would, it's just kind of a package deal, cause when you order the boxes, the box itself comes completely wired for that as a basic function, and it's very low cost over just putting one outlet out there.
So are you putting something at the northwest corner and the southwest corner?
The only thing we do on the northwest corner would be to have a 100-amp breaker installed for 220 volts.
How big's there now? How big amp? Is there a breaker there now?
There is a 100-amp breaker, but it's for feeding the 20 amps. That's the main, call it. But every plug-in in that panel is 20 amps, and there's one 15 plug-in on the backside, for whatever reason they'd have that, but anyway.
Is it a 100-amp or 200-amp box?
Uh, it's a 200-amp box. And, well, anyway, so we would take and tap on that mains and bring a 100-amp 220 outside into a pipe and go over to the southwest corner would be the primary location. There wouldn't be any trip wires or anything there.
Maybe underground.
And part of the thought is too, we would set it up so that it was, with hardware, that would allow expansion if there was any further need of outlets in that.
So everybody's gonna put that 50, 30, and a 20, that's like they're having to park for the campers.
Right.
Now we've got a breaker in. I just suggested putting a 100-amp panel box up, feed this 50-amp box down here, cause I know next year, somebody wants some more outlets, some more outlets, and some more.
So these outlets will be strictly for the band? Am I right?
Or Dave's barbecue thing or something like that, too?
I don't know.
But I thought the real...
This would be, what they're putting in now would be what the band needs.
That's just one 220 50-amp outlet, period.
And a 30-amp.
And the 30-amp.
That was our requirement.
And then a duplex. That's what comes in these boxes.
That's what I'm asking.
But it's very desirable to have one that has a little more than that than you have available for other purposes, too. And that, he's, he's working for the future, and I agree.
I just, I just know somebody's gonna want something in the future, yeah.
But, but we, we want these to be exclusively used for the bands on those events.
Correct. Maybe the band needs another one next year.
Okay.
Maybe they need a couple more 30s or something, you can put them in.
So do you agree with what Dennis just proposed?
Yes, I would just like to add that panel box, so there's future power on that side.
And so you have any idea how much this is gonna cost?
I think it probably runs in the $2,000 range.
$2,000, okay.
I haven't got everything figured out.
Okay.
It's my piece yet, but...
Now, is this something you're able to do, or do we need to contract this out? I'm just asking today.
I was told to say no.
Okay.
Yes, it's something I can do.
But we should contract out?
It's something I can do, yes, but I...
You could order the parts, though?
Yeah, I suppose we could get all that in. It would help.
As long as you'd order it.
So you wanna do bid it, or you wanna just get somebody, or...
I have a question. If you, are you gonna have a 220 outlet that's gonna be outside?
Yes, but it'll have, be in a weatherproof box and have a lid over, that's code.
Will, will it be able to be locked where nobody uses it unless you unlock it?
I, I think those could be padlocked.
Well, with all these new electric cars and everything, somebody pulls up there and just wants to...
They use the one in the park.
Pardon?
They use the ones in the park.
Do they? Okay.
I don't know.
Yeah, this guy come over here from Hiawatha with one of them, I don't know, they meet with people and stuff, but he always sat in the park and charged his car while they did it.
Oh, who's paying for that?
We are.
That's ours, that's our free camping.
Us?
Yeah, yeah.
We're paying for electricity for electric cars now.
Well, yeah.
That was a couple years ago. I don't know if they're still doing it. But yeah, it can happen all over the place.
It kinda oughta be looked into. That could get pretty expensive.
I guess if we ever saw it consistently happening, we could do that.
I don't think the frequency rate would be very high. Once a month or two?
Probably not even worse than a camper sitting there.
Well, that's true. Yeah.
First come, first served, car camper. Car camper.
But that, but that panel box is regular camper stall. I mean, the short one that I put in a couple years ago down there, that's what it would be, they have breakers put the two, but kind of, that's all they're asking for, but I just know. You wanna put the four on the back of the mural, we put two, two, there was two services there. Next thing you know, I split those up, put more wires in, and made four separate circuits.
Could you put a shut, could you put a shut-off above, above this?
The 100-amp panel box, yeah, you padlock that shut.
Yeah. So you can shut off the power to that, and it'll be fine?
So the whole thing there.
Yeah. When you don't...
Yeah, most of them come with a padlock.
Yep.
Flip on them.
But the idea is, if we do the look, the minimum right now, it's gonna be, again, that much, again, to expand it. With anything else, cause you gotta go to bigger wire, and he starts out with a big enough wire to handle everything at that point.
If you're gonna run a six, number six wire for the 50, you might as well run a four over for the 100-amp, so...
Yeah. So are you guys okay pursuing this, knowing that it's gonna cost probably $2,000 to $3,000? Is that a good estimate?
I think two would be...
Two?
I, I just found the one...
Even if we contracted out? Okay.
You gonna trench it in?
I don't know.
We gonna trench it or bore it in?
Just gonna have to hand dig that, probably.
Well, we had, we were gonna help in that respect. I think, Greg, do you have somebody committed that would do that trenching for us?
Would help some.
Yeah.
You got power, but...
I think there's three, Dr. Dale, like there's three sprinkler lines that go over to the building and spray back to the east.
Okay.
But they come from the east, so you're gonna have to hand dig it to get across those three. Usually they only go down about 18 inches with a quick conduit in, so length of a spade.
Right. The dig save has to be done anyway, no matter what.
Right.
So is it consensus of council to proceed with this project? Have Dave work it out?
Yeah.
Okay.
If they have the cords to reach that corner, I think that'd probably be better to try to put a pole or something up and down all the time.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Thank you, Dennis.
How do I proceed? Whether you wanna bid it, or you wanna find somebody, or...
We'll, we'll, we'll do it.
Okay.
Take care of it.
Here, I'll take care of it.
I'll do it.
Try to... I'll have some prices before we get back in.
Okay.
How much money you wanna go with?
Okay.
Okay, and one more issue related to the thing is the wiring for the speaker system. And it's something that I think we need to do definitely, is replace the cable to start with, for whatever reasons. And the routing, we need to maybe gain permission to work with Dave or whatever, and use, I have mentioned in here about making a little groove, one inch deep, one inch wide, to drop our wire in, and we put silicon on top of that and hold it in place. It won't be a trip hazard or anything in that respect, but it has to go quite a long distance is one of the issues.
Didn't we talk about this last year?
Well, it, I don't know, no, I didn't. I didn't have anything to do with it last year.
Dave, didn't we talk about this last year? Building a little...
I think we talked about it earlier.
Well, now here's another possibility. Today, some new issues come up. I don't know where their cape, where the pipes are under the ground. And Dave, with his expert knowledge, maybe he can tell us where there's a vacant conduit, or even if it has electricity in it, we got, maybe we could look into putting our cable right in with 110 or 220.
I thought that was... Dave, come back here.
I think we could do that.
Dave, I, I thought when we discussed this, you said your conduit was too small to add[1666.33] anything to it. Is that actually in the light fixture or is that underground?
Light conduit, two, three, it's a large conduit.
In the box is two and four.
Okay.
I think there's two twos and a one and four.
From what I've seen of the electrical under the sidewalk that feeds the lamp post, I think it's crammed tight.
That's what I remember from last year.
Every time somebody's broke that, working on the sidewalk, I think it's completely full.
Okay, but that's the first hole. It's tight. We could trench otherwise with this little cutter thing and bypass that and maybe get into the conduit that went one way or the other, maybe specifically to the west is where we'd really like to have a conduit that would be-
But what you're doing with the speakers has to come out of that box that's in the concrete.
Yeah, right.
But there's no electrical in that, so those are all empty.
Yeah.
The only thing that's in those is the speaker wire.
About, from the-
But you have to go from the wagon wheel.
Sixth Street down the other way.
The wagon wheel.
Well, yeah, starting at the wagon wheel and going west to the Sinclair Station down there where the last, Fourth Street. Is there any cables, I mean, any pipes underground that we could use?
There's pipe from Fourth Street to Fifth Street.
Just one block? That's it?
The south side has wiring in it for the streetlights.
Yeah. Okay, well-
I think most all done is for us.
Then, but I think we're gonna maybe try to get rid of just the wire on the outside of the, the light-
You mean on the ground? You mean the wire that's on the ground?
Yeah, it's on the ground, uh, well, it goes, uh-
But you'd still would have it, you'd still have a wire on the outside of the light fixture, am I right?
I think we can get rid of that, too.
I don't think you can, Dennis.
Well-
I'm gonna tell you why.
Why?
When we put those lights in, those were poured boxes that are solid concrete. The conduit and everything was in them, and then the con, yes, and then they were poured. So that conduit comes clear up underneath through those, and the bolts for those were all in there.
Can we put a hole in the, it's aluminum, I understand.
You mean a hole on the side of the-
Well, you wanna drill a hole in the, in the-
Side of the light fixture?
Yes.
There already is, with little black boxes. I think we're talking about further, further west.
Further west side.
Well, so, right?
Yeah, you go west however you get it, that will stretch it. What do you think, score the concrete all the way?
Greg, come on up.
Come on up.
One more voice of reason.
Yeah.
Obviously, Dave knows what he's talking about and I don't. But I talked to Charlie Ohm, somebody, somebody suggested to me that when Warren Sopianik's dad wired the new streetlights up, that they put a conduit all the way up and down the street with, with PVC or whatever. Warren Sopianik's dad did this years ago. And Charlie Ohm was one of them, he worked for Perry Plumbing, and he said that they, they did this, and so I would think from the statue clear to Kramer's or Sinclair Station would be all hooked together with the PVC, and you're saying there's not room to run-
I don't think there is.
There's not room to run a 3H wire through that?
We'll take the cover off the pole and see what happens.
Okay, well, that was, that was-
Well, we're still in that stage of trying to figure out how to do it, but we, we, we'll work with you if you will let us, and, and get it in there more permanent so we don't have the issues of water contamination and-
So are you just only thinking about Seventh Street West?
The whole area, every place where-
To 10th Street?
Every speaker, those four blocks.
To 10th, to 10th Street really is, is sawed, we've talked about this today, us and Kenny had a meeting today. If we can, if we can saw from the speaker boxes, you know what I'm saying, Dave? There's, there's speaker boxes that has got Kenny's conduit in them. If we can saw from that to the pole to put that in ground or in, and, and I think we've got that kinda figured out, that can be sawed and go into the pole and be permanent rather than having a piece of duct tape and stuff on the, on the top of the ground. I think, I think going from the Seventh Street East is not gonna be a terrible thing, I think that can be sawed and done. The one going from the horse, the pole west, going south, or going west is gonna be, that's gonna be tough. I mean, and that, I would hope to think that we don't have to saw all the way, but if that's what has to be done, that's what has to be done.
Let's take Kevin if they want, 'cause that's gotta got a square cement box that lift up about that high.
Right.
Like, I told them that they're gonna notch this over and they got a good, they got a good cutter that's gonna cut that. We might just need to take the poleless, lay it over, and then where that comes up, just notch that back into the pole, but just run the wire in that way.
But, but like Kenny was talking-
But you have to take the poleless to get it cut underneath the-
Like Kenny was talking today, if, if we saw from the pole to the little square box where the wiring is, then once that's sawed, you gotta be able to drill, I mean, in that groove, drill into that box and run the wire there. Just getting to the pole is gonna be the thing that they-
But you gotta get at least two inches down to get over that lip of the box.
Right.
The box itself, problem, yeah.
Yeah, under that lid cover.
Well, we're wondering if we could take a hammer drill and start on the cement and go right down at an angle and come out inside that box.
Inside the box.
Bypassing that little-
From the groove that we already cut from the pole to the box.
Okay, I think you three, that's what I think.
Yeah, if we can get together-
You three get together and are in agreement.
Yeah.
How to do it?
Yeah.
Then you don't care how much it's gonna cost.
No, I'm just saying.
I wanna know where you're gonna find a machine to cut this, too.
So, so, I mean, if you find a solution and you can find an estimate, do you think you can bring it back for the next meeting in two weeks?
Do you think you need to replace the wire that's there, though?
Yes, please.
Everything, it's there already?
Yes.
It's to have those wires-
Now, what do you think, is that, okay, I've got a figure on that from Bell and Company, will sell me some at my cost, would be $999, $1,000 even, pretty close.
What is it?
That includes the taxes and the freight to get it here.
Well, why don't you guys, all three of you guys or four, whatever it takes, to get together?
Yeah.
Find a solution that you all agree is the best case, give me, get us an estimate and bring it to the next meeting. Is that a deal?
That's a deal.
Okay, I appreciate all your work on it, it's just that, I don't think we're at that point of, to vote on anything right now.
Well, okay, well, but the next, another month goes by and this-
No, the next meeting will be April, April 9.
But, yeah.
But that's only, but that's only two weeks away, two weeks. I mean, if you think you come up with a solution before, I mean, we'll call a special meeting and, but-
Well, while you're here, what, what's the deal, why can't we just run wireless downtown? I mean, seriously?
How many speakers are there and how much power can you get out of a speaker?
I don't know, that's why I'm asking.
You're gonna have a lot of electricity doing wireless. And that maintenance thing would be, I, I wouldn't even wanna be bothered with, have to keep up with that.
Well, it seems like every four or five years we're replacing wires down there, so aren't we, aren't we just as far, wise to go with wireless if we're gonna be replacing wires every three, three to five years, Dennis?
Well, isn't it the fact that we just didn't do it right the first time, that's kinda-
There were some issues about moisture that we could take care of and make a more permanent installation than across, on the outside of that. That's what we're shooting for. And that gets the water out of it so we don't have to worry about the cable for years.
Okay, so why don't you bring back your best case solution next meeting, April 9? You'll do that for us?
Uh, oh, no, I, I'm gonna, I'll, I'll say yes.
Okay. Thank you, Dennis, thank you, Dave, thank you, Greg. Appreciate your-
Yeah, thank you.
And Kenny.
And Kenny, thank you, Kenny. All right, so we will readdress that at April 9. I'm not aware of any notices or hearings, we have no consent agenda, so the next item is the appropriations ordinance?
Move to approve appropriation ordinance number 3671 in the amount of $198,000, 08419.
Is there a second?
A second.
Is there any discussion? Included, I, I was waiting for you to hear Darlene say that included a $63,000 worth of transfers between accounts, but-
I thought about it.
I, I guess I'll make that comment. Okay, roll call, please.
Boss?
Yes.
Pippi out?
Yes.
Graham?
Yes.
Hughes?
Yes.
Troller?
Yes.
Throm?
Yes.
Bonds?
Yes.
7-0.
All right, moving along, Austin, you're up.
All right, first item up is the Parks mower and air, air vader. We talked about this in workshop and I was just bringing all the information that we gathered to you for a decision. We are looking to replace the Gravely mower, so I brought three different options. One is a Hustler mower, uh, just, yeah, there is a John Deere, and another is a Grasshopper. The Hustler came in at the lowest, uh, what, either a gas version of $11,498, 96, or a diesel mower, uh, mower at $13,249, 50. But also into consideration is the Grasshopper, which we have quite a bit of attachments for, but we're, we're gonna maintain our current Grasshopper, which can use all those attachments, including the air vader that we are recommending, but, um, just a couple, a couple different options that are out there. I, I was thinking we would go with the lowest bid, and because the Grasshopper is getting up in age, that we think in two or three, or however many Dale can squeeze out of it, we'll replace the Grasshopper then. But also is a good option is we get the second Grasshopper for $16,500 from Bruna, and, and take the, take the strain off of our current Grasshopper using the current equipment that we have, and we can split those up if needed and, and have a good operating fleet.
Since the Grasshopper we currently have has a number of attachments which can be, could be used on a new one.
Right.
And the, the difference between the Hustler and the Grasshopper is only $3,250. It's my opinion, we maybe should go with the Grasshopper.
I did call Dale and ask him what attachments there were. I don't think he told us at the workshop specifically what the attachments were, and he said it's a mower deck, an edger, a snow blade, and a snow blower. And I said, well, so if we had two Grasshoppers, could be, you'd be using both, two attachments at the same time, and he said, yes. So there is some efficiencies in staff if we do that.
Yep. Definitely not.
And we could also, we could take the Grasshopper out of the general fund and then take the air vader out of M E R, Municipal Equipment Reserve.
Oh, and that's, that's the other thing, the air, air vader, which I'm all, also, is one of those things we, we budgeted for. What the air vader does is it will help us maintain the tree health in, in, in City Park by basically loosening up the soil so air and water can flow freely through the, through the ground. Right now, it's compacted soil because we use that area, City Park, for campers and Mother's Day Market and all these other things, and it's highly trafficked, and so it's slowly killing off the trees down there, so we want to maintain that. And also the air vader, we can u, utilize at the ball complexes, and it would be a huge upgrade to the current equipment that's, that's there and help Brian Froggo out in, in his maintenance. So it's a, it's a multi-purpose tool, and wherever we need to, to free up some of the soil, we can use it.
We have, in the budget, we have $6,000 for the airator at a cemetery, so we could go ahead and take that out of the general fund. And then in the mower, in the budget, we have $12,000, so we could take the difference between the 16.5 and the 12 out of the M E R if we wanted as well, the Municipal Equipment Reserve, so. So what would the council like to do?
I move that we buy the 72-inch diesel Grasshopper at $16,500 from Bruna Implement.
$12,000 out of the general fund?
$12,000 out of general and the remaining out of M E R.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we'll do that part first. Is there any further discussion?
I'd like to ask a question.
Okay.
What, what proof is there that this air, air, whatever you wanna call it, is got anything to do with the trees?
Uh-
That's just gonna create more grass for somebody to mow is what it's gonna do. I think we could get by without it, buying a machine.
We are, I mean, we already mowed the area.
That's fine, we're gonna continue to mow it, but water and fertilizer will take care of the problems so we don't have, if we wanna try to make it into a golf course, it's just more expensive for us to buy that machine and make the grass so that we gotta mow it more.
Well, I guess, you know, if it's the double duty on the ball field, you kinda have to think about that, too. They said they would, I'm sure Brian Froggo would use it on the ball field.
I know Kim had, when she was here, was the main one on that.
I think she did suggest it though at City Park.
The what?
That Kim Bomberger with the-
Kansas Forest Street.
Yeah, she, I think she recommended it for the trees in City Park.
For the tree elf. That's why she said we were losing so many of our big oaks down there because the ground was-
Well, it's against like concrete.
Yeah.
After so many years, that's why, because what you do is you lose, and they just, they take the little, the light divots out of it.
I realize how that works. I don't know what airators are, but I can't see that we can afford, afford to try to make golf courses out of type 1s, out of our park area where everybody wants to go out and play.
Yeah.
Personally, I've watched ball fields that lasted a long time without, or parks where they didn't have to do that. If that airator's necessary, so be it. I think they're selling you something you don't need. That's my opinion.
Okay, well, the motion right now is just for the Grasshopper at the 16.5, okay? So, is there any further discussion on the Grasshopper mower? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? 7-0, okay, now we can get voted upon the airator. So, again, it's $5,000. We do have it budgeted, that doesn't mean we don't have, we have to spend it, but five, $6,000 is budgeted in the cemetery fund for it. So, would you guys like to buy it or not?
Madam Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the aviator from Bruna for the price of $5,000 for Houston City Parks and Ball Field.
Coming out of the general fund?
Coming out of the general fund.
I second that.
There's a second? Okay. Is there any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
6-1, all right. All right. Moving along, Austin?
Uh, before you is the clink final payment, and-
Did you get a letter on that?
I didn't get a letter on that, so I wouldn't, I wouldn't move forward with this at this time.
You wanna go to today, April 9 meeting?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Uh, and then you have the crosswalk change order. It included, um, the extra digging that had to take place that they didn't anticipate. Um, let me think.
Can you explain how that works? Just tell me, like, they dug down and they found some cement, but they dug down deeper because?
The, the street on the highway has varying depths of asphalt, and it actually, I thought it decreased in depth from the highway up here and slowly increased, but there's, it was hard to tell where, where everything was at. So they got digging down to their, the depth they thought, and then they kept seeing brick, and they kept seeing cement, so they kept going.
They had to keep, dig all that out for a base?
Yes.
To get a good base?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
And that's where that is. So, so they dug-
So what we had is, we had like concrete over a brick base over another, there's-
No, we had, we had asphalt, brick, concrete.
Okay.
And then base under that. So they dug all that up, what this includes is them digging that up and then a small, relatively small amount, about $300 worth of compacting extra. And then they also included a credit for $1,250 because the initial plans included a transition of asphalt back to the asphalt road, but since we're turning that road into concrete, they took the asphalt portion out of it and just brought up the eight inches of cement that was already planned. So they, that $1,250 is a credit onto this amount, so the total amount of digging minus the credit costs $4,425. I did contact Bill Mullins, and he said the school district was, like, they have been before, willing to catch, catch the other 50%. Also, I've been learning today that there's gonna be other adjustments, but in, in that they didn't use what was anticipated, so a few hundred dollars here and there of things that they didn't need to use will, will happen. And then I'm anticipating, if I'm not misspeaking, that engineering will be half of what they estimated, so we should be seeing a balance on that. So this is-
Well, we prepaid that in to Kato, right?
Yes, we did.
So you're saying we would get a credit back from them, and when the project's complete?
Right.
Okay. But we still have to pay this change order at this time?
Well, I don't think we're paying it. We're just approving it.
We're approving the change order, okay. And I appreciate you including the email from Bill to show that he has it in writing that they would pay 50%?
Yep.
And they'll pay 50% of the $4,000.
Of the $4,000, yes. I forwarded this change order and, yeah, explained it.
So the city won't pay half of this?
Yes. And it might, it'll probably come out to, we'll get money back at the end of this project.
That we'll split 50/50 with this?
Yeah, we'll split 50/50 with this school.
So I would entertain a motion to authorize this change order, or approve this change order, actually?
Move to approve the crosswalk change order.
For 44.25?
For 44.25.
Is there a second?
I second.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. Thank you very much.
Number four, it's just information for the downtown tree program. There's an email from Kim Bomberger describing that the importance of getting healthy trees and, and how they actually put them into place is really important. And then...
Can I, can I talk about this real quick? Because I, I was the one that kind of said, let's talk about this next meeting. And have we gone to the tree board with this?
They, they're the place we started with.
So they, have they read these bids and made a recommendation for us? Okay. So we have a tree board, and I think it's in our best interest, since there's such a huge difference in watering. And I did call Kim, and I think you included her email about the, you know, she thinks that poor watering's not enough, based on her email. And then I also sent her an email this morning, asking her the difference between this Main Street maple and the Shankton maple. And she tried to explain it to me. And then I asked her the difference between a Golden Colonnade and an Autumn Gold Ginkgo. And she was explaining it to me. And finally, I decided, you know, this is really more of a tree board question because all these differences, I mean, I think it's important that, has a tree board gone through and selected where they want each type of tree? Were they involved with that?
They, I talked with, we, that's where the plan came up with, actually, no, not, not where, not where.
So this, so this is a key to me. Like, the difference, and I'll give you one of the examples, in this Golden Colonnade Ginkgo, it's more columnar. So it would be 20 inches wide versus a Autumn Gold, which may be 20 to 30 feet wide. So it depends on where you plant it, whether you want it to be 20 or 30. So for me, I'm like, okay, this, these are all things kind of, the tree board should be looking at these two bids for us and telling us based on what plannings are right, and making a recommendation to us for the watering as well. They're the experts. So I think what we need to do right now, before we go spend the tree board's time, whether the bid is 13 or 17, or somewhere in between, do we want to proceed with this project? Is it the desire of the council to proceed with this project? And if it is, I would like to give this information to the tree board. Because like, another example is like, one of them on that lace bark, one recognized the, I'm going to use the wrong term here, the cultivar is the ali, and one didn't specify the cultivar. So again, this is not, don't ask me any more beyond that. But, so if we want to proceed with this tree project, whether it's 13 or 17, we can have a consensus of council that we do want to proceed. We want the tree board to look at these differences in these two bids and make a recommendation for us. Are you guys okay with that? I mean, that's what I think, because for me to try to learn all this stuff is kind of silly.
Why don't, why don't we just put it on hold and take it to the tree board?
No matter what?
Let's just...
Well, I guess my gut feeling is, I've heard some people say, I don't really want these trees. And I've heard, so before I take the tree board's time, I want to make sure that the general consensus is to proceed with the downtown tree plan. I just need a consensus of that.
I have heard both ways.
I know, and that's why I'm not sure what you guys want to do.
But a lot of people are under the assumption that they're going to be putting trees everywhere. And I've tried to explain to them, trees are only going to go where they're wanted. They have been marked out very specifically where the people or the, they don't want them. It's not going to go back in there. That doesn't mean, yeah, it's not going to be like every, to every block or, or whatever. But I don't know how you're going to do it on side streets, but on Main Street, you know, I've talked to the different people there, and some are like, oh, yeah, we want trees. And the other one's like, oh, no, not again. So...
So that's, that's what I need to know, what your council wants. I mean, if you, if we're going to pursue this, I mean, even at $13,000, we need to kind of know that if we send it to the tree board, we should know that we're going to proceed. We just don't know which bid we're going to take.
I talked to Anastasia at the extension office, and I also visited with Jan down to the Blue Rapids Greenhouse. And there are options of, we could get some very nice shrubs or landscaping, you know, for the spots. And they would cost us a lot less, and it would still look very nice downtown. I mean, if they, we want to have some trees or use trees that are already there. There's, and there's a lot of people that do not want trees downtown because, I mean, there's some like John McNish who says he doesn't want a tree because he put all this money into his building and he doesn't want it covered up. There was another lady who told me that she put a sign out in front of her business, and if they put a tree out there, it's going to cover up her sign. So, and there's people that don't want birds in the tree, you know?
I know.
And so, I mean, you know, there's other options. We don't have to put trees every place. I mean, we need the, we need the landscape. I mean, I think we need to put some kind of landscaping in these places. But it doesn't have to be all trees, and there's a lot less expensive options to do downtown than trees. I mean...
And I mean, that's, that's, we were trying to avoid putting in places where people didn't want them. For instance, John McNish, he told us straight up, he doesn't want one. That's why he's not, that's why there's no plan to put one there.
Right. But, so there's other options. We don't have to put all these trees and spend all this money. I mean, we can leave some of the trees, we can do other things. We don't have to spend $13,000. So, and there's a lot of people downtown that think there's a lot of other places we need to spend our money, other than putting 13 or 17,000 downtown in trees. So, I mean...
Okay.
Well, Madam Mayor, isn't there a possibility, if there's a lot of people that don't want them, but there's still some that do, that maybe this would change these guys' estimates about what it was going to cost?
Well, now wait, they already did that. Austin already went through, and, and they are only placing these trees where people want them. And...
That's definite already.
Yeah. So that's not really, like, we're, we're planting 20, 20 trees. Three Ginkos, eight Lace Bark, and nine Maple.
But perhaps if they knew that we were going to do some other landscaping, maybe some people, maybe we wouldn't have to plant that many trees, is what I'm saying.
I think it would be better to be consistent in what we plant.
I did ask her, I said, so why do we have different varieties? And she said, the reason being if disease strikes, you don't wipe out the whole, all of it. So I thought that means, I mean, I had to ask the question.
I meant consistent as trees.
Versus, versus shrubs?
Shrubs, yes.
Okay, so I, all I need from you guys is a yes or no to proceed with the tree, downtown tree program, to send this, don't you think it needs to go the tree board at this point? Let them decide between these cultivars, whether we're okay, based on where they're placing them. And then they can bring, come back and tell us which bid is better, based on what they believe, they believe the watering should be, and what they believe the cultivar type should be, species should be.
One thing I just wanted to note was that the watering, if the Prairie Stone, they're charging 425 per watering, and if they do the same amount of watering as the Gudenkopf, their bid would be $11,900 for watering, whereas Gudenkopf is $6,640 for watering.
If, if he does 28, yeah, yeah. I mean, in, in her email, it was pretty clear that she didn't think four was sufficient, even in a fall planting. And depending on how dry it is, you know, that determines how often they would have to water them. And she said then in the spring, where they would still have to water them, you know, just once a month in the fall. And so, again, I'm trying to get this tree board involved because they're experts in this, and I'm trying to learn. So...
I would like to see it sent to the tree board.
You want it, you want it sent to the tree board?
So do I.
Yeah.
Terry?
Well, I definitely think so, yeah.
I just, just see the perennials, so I don't really care about them.
Want to go to the tree board?
Yes.
Not go to the tree board? What do you want, Jason?
You just, you want to vote yes or no, basically, so we're not wasting their time, right? Basically, I mean, if you're leaning no on trees, then we, you want to know...
I want to know if you guys really don't want to do this, we wouldn't want to send it to the tree board. That's my point. Have you guys all understood that?
Yeah.
Yeah. So in other words, you guys are all saying, yeah, we're pretty much, we're probably in on the trees. That's...
Well, I changed my mind about that because everybody I've talked to has asked me, please, don't be messing with those trees again. I says, that's only one-eighth of a vote sitting in this chair.
Right. Okay, so you're kind of...
They've all asked me that. Nobody's had a positive feedback to me yet.
Okay. And yours is a no? And yours is a no?
Yeah, I'm a no. Three, four.
Man, that's close. Three, four.
Something needs to be done. I don't know what it is for downtown, but something should be done for downtown. It's, it's very sad-looking.
You know, the, the trees, and again, when we have these events, or like we have the car show, it gets hot. That concrete will cook you. And it's nice to have the trees, it's nice to have the awnings. And I know you guys, you know, I know, but just, these people, if you watch them come in, shh, right under the trees. They're there.
They're under the awnings, too.
They're under the awnings.
But I'm just saying, the people have cars, they get close there, you know, because the birds aren't going to come out, whether we have how many thousand people there. But I'm just saying, we just produce so much heat with all the concrete and the bricks and everything. It just gets...
It gets rotten.
Okay, well, I think that, you know, I'm pretty confident Todd would vote yes, just based on prior discussion. So that would probably be, it'd probably go to three, five. So at this point in time, we're not voting on anything. We're just going to send it to the tree board.
There you go.
The most important thing is that they get all this documentation, Austin. They get exactly where you're going to plant, what type of tree, and why.
Yes.
And so they can understand whether or not this columnar or the broader one works.
Yes, of course.
And I'll probably go and try to learn from the tree board, so when we have another discussion. But this was pretty involved. So at that point in time, so we're going to table, we're going to send it to the tree board. How about that?
Yep.
I think we should have probably done that last time. I wish I would have thought about it. I was trying to figure it out, and I should have just sent it to the tree board.
Number five is a project that came up when we were planning out the ADA ramps at Fifth and Carolina. Now I can't even remember which corner it happened on. There is a valve that is in the way if we were to install this ADA ramp. So Tony brought it to our attention, and then Kent shows me the pictures that are in, in here, of what everything looks like when it was uncovered in, I want the last numbers safe, I want to say 50s, is the last time that was uncovered. Or a while ago, if you can tell by these pictures. And it is a mess of eight-inch, six-inch, four-inch lines that has been on the list of things to do for a while. And what we're proposing, and since it's in a location where it would have to cross a brick street, we're proposing boring in and completing this project, and basically replacing all this mess with eight-inch all the way through. And, I mean, there's...
So will you dig holes on the northeast side and the southeast side?
Yeah.
Is that where the two holes would be?
Wherever there's going to be a connection. So you'll see at the end where it says eight-inch long sleeve, four-inch long sleeve, they'll have to dig that up.
So they're going to dig all four corners?
Yes. And then a little, and there's probably going to be, probably five holes. And one big one where they're going to bore it out. But especially since they're going to be installing a fire hydrant on that corner. But this would take care of a mess that's been waiting to be fixed for, for a while. And it's, it's a half a block worth of pipe, basically, a radius of, I mean, just a pretty decent-sized project. And it'll, it'll help out by getting it done before we do any ADA ramp work.
So this was on Kent's list of improvements needed?
Yes.
Prior to this ADA thing?
Yeah.
Okay. And I, you know, Bob's Car Wash is down here. JB Car Wash is down here, just to get an idea of what it is. And all these four corners are really presidential.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Just so you, I drove down and looked at them. You probably knew that, but, Jason?
No, I mean, I, I own the house on that one corner, so...
Oh, one of those is yours?
Uh, the one in the southeast one. Yeah, the one getting the fire hydrant.
Oh, okay. No preferential treatment there.
It's one of the more things I got to mow around.
Where Mrs. Sweet used to live?
Okay, so there's obviously two, two bids here?
Yes.
They're exactly the same work?
Yes. That we, we gave them a list of things they needed to do, and they bid directly off of it.
It looked like that, that directional drilling was different between 6,000 and 15,000. And same way with the backhoe work was 4,000 on Deep Creek versus eight on Larson. So those are the two substantial differences. Are you guys okay with proceeding to do this work? I mean, it's something we probably need to do.
Yeah, before you put in ADA ramps, that's kind of silly to put them in and then tear them back out and do the work.
Exactly. And, I mean, the, the alternative would be to, to move, because that's the problem, was to move the valve. You're going to have to dig it up anyways and physically, like, put pipe in and move it over. So while you're down there, why aren't you fixing everything else? And we're probably going to find a leak somewhere.
And it will probably just come out of the water revenue fund?
Yes, yes.
I find it hard to believe that the two estimates would be $12,000 difference.
Right, well...
Well, you notice that Larson included a mobilization fee and Deep Creek did not. But the two big differences were that, that directional drill for Larson was 15,000, and the directional drill for Deep Creek was six.
The, this, it didn't come as a surprise to us because we, when we bid out last year's water line on North Street, Deep Creek was about $40,000 cheaper than everybody else.
Really?
Yeah.
And they actually did that work right there on Eighth Street for us, right out there, when we had the water problem?
Yep.
And they sent the thank you note?
And they sent a thank you.
That's a big plus.
They're nice people.
Yes.
Well, they're puffing on that big Havana cigar.
So is it consensus to proceed and do that improvement? And if so, which bid would you like to take?
I move that we take Deep Creek construction at $18,000, $10.
Out of the water revenue fund?
Out of the water revenue fund.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven oh. All right.
Okay. Sixth one is CES proposal for Hometown. This is one of the projects we talked about at the workshop, as far as a street improvement project. And this is one of two that council directed, or consent, came to consensus that we needed to get engineering for. So I asked CES to put together a proposal to do the engineering. So, and I told them to just section everything out, the engineering services, the preliminary and construction documents on, on this one. And then additional services being the, the bidding services, which on smaller projects, we don't typically utilize them for, but some of the bigger ones, we utilize bidding services. But on this one, the engineering services came to, well, $2,690 to do a topographic survey, because Hometown Drive is one that we were concerned about getting the water where it needed to go. And I, I was stressing that with, with, with Tony on that. And he, we looked it over and found that there's some flat spots that we need to get out to improve the, the drive on the area. And so that $2,690 is for those preliminaries.
What about putting any more catch basins or anything in in that area?
Tony, you want to come up?
Maybe one or two.
Further down to the...
Did you, did you drive out there recently?
Yep.
I drove out there today with all the rain, so you could definitely see the unevenness. But, you know, the one storm... But, you know, the one storm, I noticed you included your preliminary services to look, address stormwater issues. And, you know, that one stormwater drain is on the hill, not at the bottom of the hill. Can we fix that?
Yeah, I think, I mean, if we add, if we add some, that's what this would evaluate in this preliminary stage.
Where else we need a storm drain?
Yeah.
Is that the only one out there?
Correct.
On the north side?
It looks like there are two, and I haven't shown this, to have two drainage easements that we could utilize. One is already being utilized right now, and the other one's on the north side, I can't, direction, the south side, between some houses that we could possibly utilize as well.
In the corner, in the round, where it rounds?
Right on the south.
On the, on the south side, yeah.
The south end?
So, yeah.
Yeah, we evaluate all the headlits and work with Austin City Staff to come up with some recommendation to improve.
Right.
Did CES do the original engineering?
I believe so. Before my time.
Do you think we'll be able to get rid of all that unevenness and that water that's just sitting there?
Yes, I think so. I mean, definitely with adding catch basins, you can create more slope. I mean, it looks like they tried to drain, I mean, they tried to drain it all in one location, and it's just became flat.
Well, it was uphill, based on what I looked, I mean, I just sighted it, but it looked like it was uphill.
I did look at the original plans, and it all should have worked. On paper, it should have worked. It was constructed that way, or...
When you walked out there, did you notice how thin the concrete was?
I didn't look that close.
Yeah.
I think Austin told us one time that concrete should last about 50 years.
Yeah, if you, if residential.
And that's not the, that drive is not very well, I mean, lightly traveled. Why is it lasting only, what, 15 years or...
Well, if you look and see how thin the concrete is, how thick are we going to make the concrete?
Well, we do seven inches.
Seven inches?
For residential developments now. The original plans are six inches and...
When they laid that, they had a truck that they put sand and aggrit and everything in and tried to mix it.
They mixed their own stuff.
Mixed their own stuff and put in there. It wasn't bought from ready-mix, so.
So the original plan...
Potentially some base problems. I don't know if they, I don't know what they did with the base.
Yeah.
And you said the original plan was for six inch?
Really? There's no base?
Was that...
Go look at it.
What the specs are supposed to be, or was that something they wanted to do?
That's what the plan showed.
Wait, you guys, hello, wait. Just one conversation, please?
The original plans were for a six-inch thick.
Okay.
Payment section.
So didn't they just make, like you said, they kind of made up their little brew?
Yeah.
That's what I hear.
They did.
All right.
My question about this, worrying about this Hometown thing, what's the third number in there for?
The third number is the bidding services.
And what's that about?
He draws up contracts and has, basically, he sends out to all the contractors, and he's the contact in that situation. I don't know, did I cover all bases?
Yeah.
Pretty much.
Yeah, we pretty much just run the bidding services. We advertise, we take calls from contractors, we attend the bid opening and review bids and make recommendations.
That's part of this one number, then?
Yeah, and that's an option.
It's the third number.
It's the third number.
Third number.
Third number.
So Austin's recommendation was to do the first two services and not the bidding services?
Right.
I see.
And that would be because you give us the specs, we give the specs to the engineers, and we believe they will create it as you drew it out?
Correct. You'll give it to the contractors. Yep.
And in something like this, as a big of a project, when they're actually constructing it, we might consider having an inspector on site every once in a while to watch how it's being done, at least take samples of the concrete while the construction's happening. But as far as bidding services, I think we could probably handle that.
Well, that sounds like something we should, so we don't end up with a mess.
Right. Right. We did that, we did that on Carolina behind Casey's. We had Tony go out and inspect the concrete, and we want to make sure we put in good roads.
So would that be listed something else? Would that be 2.2, which has provided assistance to climb during construction?
I mean, it would fit under that.
And it would just be on an hourly basis?
Yeah. At the time, we can put together more specific services if you know what you want.
Right.
Okay. You guys have any more questions for Tony?
Not on that one.
Thank you for being there.
Stay there.
I would entertain a motion on what, how you want to proceed on this one. If you want to do the two engineering services and do the bidding in-house, you would, based on the recommendation of the $5,300. And is this coming out of sales taxes?
Sales taxes.
Okay. So I would entertain a motion?
Move that we do Hometown Drive, including the price of the survey, $2,690, construction documents of $2,610.
Coming out of sales tax one?
Coming as sales tax.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Is there any further discussions or questions to Tony? All in favor, say aye.
What was that total? Excuse me?
The $5,300.
Fifty-three, okay. I say aye.
Opposed? Seven-oh. All right. And the second one has to do with the 20th Street.
20th Street CES proposal for engineering. And this is just a more simplified version. Had them do the construction documents, $2,060, and then also said throw in, just to see what it costs for bidding services. But again, I think we could probably handle the bidding services on this. But still, the same sentiment, later on, we would have inspection, and we could talk about that down the road when that happens.
Hey, Tony, I'm sorry.
Go for it.
Tony, on your little red box here on page 59, you're really going to come down to where the clink ends, right?
Correct.
Because it's a little bit lower than the actual, okay. And you, did you go out there and look at it? It's all weaved and it looks uneven. Have you looked at that?
Yeah, I went out today, Austin. I discussed that this morning.
Did it look, it looked pretty beat up, didn't it?
Yeah. You're talking about where the water's standing there?
Well, I'm just saying the weave of the road, really. I mean, of course, you go all that street all the time, too. But actually, the left-hand turn lane is the worst, going southbound before you make a turn onto Highway 36. And it's just going to continue to get beat up with all the traffic out of Casey's and Landals.
All the trucks.
All the trucks.
On that route. That was the reason I wanted to go to the north side of Carolina Street instead of split that street because all the truck traffic coming around from Casey's background, so.
So, you know, I think we've mentioned a couple times about the water holds, I think Todd's the one that brought it up initially, but the water holding at that intersection at 20th. But we can't solve that with this?
No, I don't believe so.
No, why not?
The, so the center street is extremely flat, following the center line of it. So the water sheds off the highway, and then it gets to a flat area. And you see it down here where it's flat. But when they fill those fillets in, it's just difficult, because you have to take the water from your edge of road, and then another 10 to 15 feet to the curb, and it just becomes even flatter at that point.
Crown the street a little more.
And with asphalt. Well, we could, but once you get to that edge, and then you have 20th Street coming to it, you want to match the highway and not, not create the bump in the highway, like you would in a residential street where you keep, you maintain the crown with both streets. On the highway, you don't want to maintain your crown, because you don't want the vehicles traveling 30, 35 mile an hour to hit that.
Can we create 20th Street at this intersection, what we are going to work on, crown it so the water does run to whatever catch basins are there?
There are no catch basins.
Isn't there a catch basin in front of Pony Express Auto?
No.
No? Where's...
Well, on the west side.
Clearing by Casey's.
Down at the end. There's one right at the corner of 20th and Center, on the west.
On the west side?
Yep.
Right there at the corner?
Right there.
So are we going to create it so water will drain into that? Of course, we have a, do we, you're going to do a lay-down curb to make that happen, or?
You're, I mean, you're talking about right there at the intersection in the, you know, where you're stopped at.
Well, I, I don't know where the only catch basin is, but I'm trying, is that what this one is, right there?
Yeah, this is an old photo. But there's one similar there. It's just moved back to that big turning radius.
So is, just from a theory standpoint, is 20th Street come down to the, to the stoplight?
Yes.
It comes down?
Yep.
And so can we make it go down and at least drain more into that than currently does that?
Yeah, off of 20th Street.
Yeah.
Where we're doing improvements, yes.
Okay, so we can create, we can solve some of the problem on the, on the west side of the road. But we can't solve any of the...
I mean, the east should continue. If you can get to the gutter, it'll go around the curve and go east to an inlet.
Oh, so you think we might be able to help solve the problem?
Yeah, but you're not going to, I don't think you're wanting to take up that area behind the, just to the north off Center Street that was redone in the clink project.
We don't want to redo anything. We just want to make it, if we can solve any of that problem with how we create 20th.
Yeah. Anything redone with 20th will have a good crown on it.
So that we...
It should drain, yeah.
So we should get some of it.
Push water to the curbs, and then when it gets to the curbs, it shouldn't...
It doesn't though, Tony. It sags there by Hardee's. It has ever since that project's been completed.
Yeah, where the clink, from the clink work.
From the clink project.
But if he, but he's saying if he crowns it enough off 20th, he'll push it on around the corner. Am I right?
Right. If we can get it off 20th to the curb, the problem is we can't get that water to the curb that sits.
Right.
Because it's just too flat in there in those big fillets where the...
But whatever water we have coming off 20th now, we can get to the curb.
Yes.
We will try to get it to...
They'll be crowned on 20th to get it to the curbs, not continue south to Center, to that flat area.
Okay. So we should improve some of the problem, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
At least it'll take care of those little...
As long as we're doing water, it doesn't really say anything about, in your construction documents specifically about storm sewer, but you will look into that, that is included, or?
Yeah, it would just be in, I mean, your typical section's going to show putting a crown in that street.
Okay. So it should address storm sewer issues?
Yep.
Or storm water issues, I guess?
Correct.
Okay. I'm so glad you're here tonight, Tony. You guys have any other questions for Tony?
Austin pre-warned me, and I still came.
I'm warning you. You have questions.
I got a question for Austin. All these streets we're doing, are we going to make sure before we ever lay any concrete, we've contacted Kansas Gas, make sure there's no gas lines underneath of these?
Right.
Inspected the water lines and the storm sewer lines and all that, even if we need to camera them?
Right. No, we will. We will.
That's why I'm asking.
Yes.
You know, if there's anything under 20th?
I'm still upset about the hole over here we got.
Is there any utilities under 20th Street?
One right there.
The water's on the west edge.
The water's on the west side?
As we did that two years ago.
That one.
Wait, 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 wait. One conversation. On that, the water line is on...
It's on the west side.
Under 20th? Under 20th, or on the west side?
I think it's moved mostly to the outside, behind the curb.
Okay.
As we replaced that a couple years ago.
Okay. And you don't know if any other utilities are under 20th?
Eventually, it'll be back under 20th, I think, when you get out of that turn lane.
And you get out of it.
Near the entrance of Pony Express.
Yeah, that was a new extension a few years back, right?
Yeah, we put that new line in there and then connected it going north.
Yeah.
And clear over into past Hardee's over there.
Yep.
I'm sorry, what, what point were you trying to make, Kevin, before, when I just had one conversation?
To make sure all the, all the utilities are good.
Oh, okay.
Yep.
But on this one, and you know anything about Hometown? Do we have utilities under that U shape?
I think the sewer's behind the houses. Water should be, I think, I mean, I'm sure it's behind the curb.
Okay.
So, yeah, I don't know if there's much.
So we'll check all that. I guess his point is, check before we do any, right?
That's exactly right. I don't want to put a new streak down and go back in and dig it up.
And the, well, theoretically, and obviously, we're changing out the street after so many years of Hometown.
Yep.
So that goes, take this with a grain of salt. Theoretically, the plumbing should be good around Hometown.
Right.
Because it's not very old.
Because it's not very old.
Get down here and start from some of these where the storm sewers cross. We need to make sure those are cambered and all that, in case that we got any breaks or something, try to get them fixed.
Actually, when we, when we, you bring the estimates, you can report on exactly where the utilities are in offalls. So report on it, so we know it's been thought about?
We can do a, so like on Hometown, where we're doing the survey, we do the one call and get the utilities located. We'll do the one call on 20, on 20th Street, even though we're not doing a survey, but we can do the one call, have them all marked, and then just draw them on our, draw them on.
Okay. Thanks, Tony. All right. With that being said, does someone want to make a motion on, on the CES proposal?
Madam Mayor, I move that we approve the engineering for 20th Street from Carolina to Center Street, construction documents of $2,060.
Coming out of the...
Sales tax.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven-oh. All right.
All right. My last thing for discussion is not on here, but we were talking about Cleanup Week. It's the third week in April. And after watching last year's Cleanup Week, currently, every day of Cleanup Week, or at least four days out of the week, our street crew starts at one end of town and goes to the, goes to the other. Next day, starts at one end of the town, goes to the other, and so on and so forth. And I think that's a wasteful way to do a Cleanup Week. I think my, I guess my suggestion, if the council would approve it this, or at least come to a consensus on this, is since we already have the town split up into wards, that we split up Cleanup Week into a ward system. So Monday would be Ward 1. And our street crew would go through, clean up all of Ward 1, and then Tuesday, Wednesday, and so on and so forth, Ward 2, Ward 3, Ward 4. That way, they can concentrate on one area of town, get it all cleaned up, not be going from one end of town to the other, and just spending all their time they can in Ward 1, getting it cleaned up, and leaving Friday for a catch-up day if something really needs to be picked up or cleaned up or anything like that. But I think that would be a better way to do that. And I'm suggesting this with the caveat that we highly advertise it this way and get the word out there, that, and including how educating our, the citizens on what ward they're in. Because if, if I tell you Ward 1 is on Monday, and you don't know what ward you're in, you're going to miss it. And we know that. And we want to get it, and we want to make sure everybody knows where they, where they live and when they're going to get the opportunity for stuff to get picked up. So I guess I was looking to see what you think of that idea.
How do you guys feel about that?
Well, one thing about the wards, they're not straight lines, and so, you know, there are going to be people confused about what ward they're in.
Sometimes I say, what ward are you in? And they said, I don't know. And I said, well, did you vote for, did you vote for Darlene? You know, because if you voted for Darlene, you have to, you must be Ward 2.
You might be better off to choose like a street, like...
Which would be a street west.
Oh, well, that's not a bad idea.
And then maybe the south end of town.
So it's just actually quadrant it off?
Yeah, quadrant it off into a section.
That's probably easier, because I do think, I don't think everybody always understands what ward they're in.
Including the help. The help probably don't know where the ward is.
I wouldn't underestimate them. They probably, no. But no, I think, I mean, that's, that's actually a good idea.
That's a good idea.
I just picked Ward because it was already...
Well, yeah, yeah, no, I understand.
Yeah. But we can, we can definitely section it off. And, and if that makes it easier for the public to understand, hey, 10th Street.
I was going to say, you probably should just use the highways.
Yeah.
And use 10th and 36th. That's an easy way. People know which, where they are from 10th and the 36th.
Yeah. So you go 10th, 10th, west of 10th and north of 36th, and you got day one, let's say. And if you're in that...
Because then they don't have to look at another document. They know where they are in relation to that. I think that's a good idea.
Yeah. So then we can fashion up maps, we can, or we can fashion up... So then we can fashion up maps, we can, or we can fashion up descriptions and maps and all that stuff. And we got a few weeks we're out, and we can get it into the paper, get it online and, and get it, get people educated.
Our businesses really don't use this, do they? It's just residential?
It's mainly residential. I, I don't know if any business is-
So on 36th, you wouldn't do any of that, but you would do 11th and 12th?
Yeah, all the, all up there, yeah.
And you have breathing heights.
Yep.
And then he said that if he splits it into four sections, then the Friday would be for all the people that call and said, "Hey, you missed mine."
Something along those lines, something, something quicker.
Perfect opportunity for us in the office to say, "Okay, we've changed the way we do this. Remember, in the fall, now you're gonna be number one, so this is how we're gonna do it next time, too."
Yep.
So we, we realize the first time's gonna be a learning curve. We're gonna get some people saying, "Hey, I put this stuff out on Monday and you didn't come. Where are we at?" And, and we know that. We get a lot of calls. We do it.
Yep.
Okay, so we're gonna divide it in quadrants?
Yep.
I have to figure out where my ward runs sometimes, because it jags up.
Oh, where your ward is. Okay, I was like, where you are on this, so you should be able to-
No, where my ward runs, because it jags up.
So yeah, I mean, I think this will be a more efficient use of our time.
Okay, sounds good. Anything else?
Uh, you know, I always think I have, oh, okay. Some of the updates that I didn't get into my highlights. BMW, I talked to them about a warranty. They, and they're still kind of iffy on it, but they told me if, they warranty their, whatever they install, as far as deck works, for five years. But the equipment itself has a 10-year conditional. But I've, I'm, I asked them about hooking it to a commercial building. Because one contractor I've talked to specifically, and he lined it out in detail, not for this project, but for other air conditioners we've hooked up, that once you hook any units to a commercial property, that whether it has a five-year or 10-year warranty on it, it now is reduced to a one-year warranty, no matter what you're hooking to it.
It depends, it depends on the brand.
Okay.
Depends on the brand.
Well, yeah, we just wanted a writing note, whatever it's gonna get us.
Yeah, and he said, he said he would register us automatically with the 10-year conditional warranty. And, yeah. That was the information I got from, from BMW. Update on the pool personnel. Last we checked, there was 11 applicants. Some of those were concession stand applicants. I had Jill call on Monday or Tuesday and fill in, talk to those that haven't applied back, and, and gave that information to Claire. We have been getting some rumblings that some lifeguards just don't want to get recertified for some reason. One of the managers called them lazy, but that's just, that's a personal issue. So we are looking at holding a, a recertification class here. So it makes them easier to, to get them going. So we can actually open the pool when it's ready.
We hope so, otherwise we will hear about it in future.
I think-
And this is the FEMA lots?
Those are the FEMA, and I quoted a list of FEMA, FEMA lots. And highlighted ones are the ones that are being leased right now. And there's a whole bunch of empty ones that we mow on a regular basis.
Now, the empty ones we have to mow?
Yes.
I called FEMA again and they still haven't called me back. Maybe Jason, you need to call them. Maybe they need a male's voice. Hello, I'd like to discuss.
And I think, I think that's all I can remember that, that I have for updates.
Debbie? I, I sent you an email about, you know, we said we wanted a policy on having two people there when bids were open. And I, and you emailed me back that you thought it would be combined with the purchasing, but it's kind of different, because we're not really involved with purchasing. We are only involved with bidding. So I think there needs to be a separate policy.
Well, actually, that, my thought, because I've seen purchasing policy where it goes from, you're purchasing this amount, so you're gonna do, let's say, 5,000, this is how you, this is how you handle $5,000 worth, worth of, worth of purchasing. If you hit 10,000, you have to go do bidding, or something like that.
Well, we have 20,000 in our policy now. I remember where you approved that, that anything over 20,000 dollars had to come to council. Do you remember that?
Yeah.
That was in the last-
To go to bid.
Had to go to bid.
Had to go to bid, yeah.
Not just to council. Council has to do it.
So, I mean, there, there could be something written in there as far as like how bids are opened and who handles that.
Well, yeah, but any, I guess the key thing is, anything that goes to bid wouldn't necessarily, there'd be things less than 20,000 that would, that would require a bid opening?
Yes, yeah.
And I do want to, because bid openings currently are not a private thing. They are public. And in fact, typically, like the smaller things, for instance, the, when we requested bids to buy that piece of land, typically, nobody would show up for that. But what, I can't even remember his name. Chris Butler requested, "Hey, can I be there when you open it up?" And I said, "We opened him up in the lobby."
But I still think we want a policy that, that when they're, the bid, the land, of course, we don't know what those bids are gonna be. But I still think our decision was to have a policy that had at least two people, one being a member of the governing body. So, case in point, on the audit bids. Now, let's say Darlene was there. And you open those audit bids, and that one person didn't bid on a single audit. Maybe Darlene would say, before it came to the entire council, "Hey, we should have a bid for this single before we bring it to the whole council." So to stop the, you know-
But the, then that would mean we would have to call them and go, "You didn't, or you, you need to do that."
We can't do that.
That's unfair.
We can't do that, okay. Well, the other thing is, just to be able to say, let's say Chris Butler wasn't there, then we have two people there to open the bids.
Which, which is, which is fine, but I, I want, yeah. But before putting in any extra rules, or, I don't, that sounds negative, but come, come to a bid opening.
No, we want a policy. We already decided that. We want a policy that two people are always there for a bid opening. That's what we want.
But if you don't know how a bid opening works, but how do you, how do you, for instance, when's, when's our flush tank?
April 5.
April 5. Come, come to that one. And, and, and that way you know what, that way you can go, "This is the best policy going forward." And, and I think that helps.
Well, when the council asks you to write a policy, I don't think you should second guess this.
I'm not. She was working, Debbie was working on it. She got examples of policies.
Some do and some don't.
She was still working on it.
Some are really in detail and some are not.
She was still working on it. It's, it's not like the process was stopped. It was, hey, how about we ask? And that way, when that policy comes forward for you to vote on, it doesn't work.
And I think the policy is just so that it shows everybody is-
Treated the same.
Right.
Treated the same and-
And there's no question.
Under the table type things.
But regardless, everybody's invited to come April 5.
But I think we do want a policy going forward, that there's always two sets of eyes, one being a member from the governing body, which means you would have to communicate to the governing body when the bid openings are.
Right. But here's, here's my question. And this is, we have governing body right now that has, I hate to say free time, but can show up during the day and do this stuff. What happens?
We're not gonna predict the future, so we're gonna go on now.
So, but you're gonna-
No, we're gonna go on. We want to set a policy. We're going on. Okay. The other thing on the city clerk was about the numbers for the building?
The house numbers.
And you said you struggled with that a bit?
Yes, because there, well, I only heard from three different cities. And Washington said that they don't have, they don't have anywhere, or give numbers out, but they probably should. And another city said they did 20 years ago, but they stopped doing it. And the third city said that they were interested in what responses I received.
They want to know how to do it.
So they're probably talking about it, too.
So you know, is the problem that trying to find four-inch numbers, is that part of the problem? I mean, can't we change ordinance and say it's three-inch numbers, or is that a fire code? Dave's gone.
Four, the four-inch was a fire code.
The four-inch is a fire code thing? Okay. And I asked her, I said, "Why don't you call Gary? Because he does signs. Maybe he knows where numbers are." And Gary was gone, so she's gonna-
Gary's gone today.
So you're gonna keep searching?
I'm going to.
Keep searching.
Need a stencil and just spray paint.
Well, I'm thinking if we want her to-
They used to have it on the curb.
At one time, I think the scouts or somebody, somebody went around because they came around and they, they had, they had stencils and they put them on her curb at one time. That was years ago.
But they really need to be on the house.
No, I realize that.
And I think ideally, we would like them to be reflective, right? Ideally?
It'd be nice, yeah, at night.
So anyway, she'll pursue that. Anything else for Debbie? Okay, moving along to standing committees. Anything for Street?
I want to hear anything on the Street sweeper.
Haven't heard anything, but I was anticipating mid-April, if I was counting the days right.
Did you have something?
Uh, yes. We talked about refaining the parking lines, because there are some places that it's yellow that really could be parking spots. Now-
What were we talking about? Where at?
Uh, say in front of the dentist's office. There, there are different places around town that it's painted yellow. Apparently, at one time, they, someone needed to get into loading, unloading, I don't know what. But it's never, never been painted, and there could be like a couple more spots, parking lines. And we, we talked about it earlier.
How long? I don't remember this conversation.
Didn't they do that? Didn't the street department take care of that in front of the dentist's office?
Well, in front of the therapist. The, they, after they painted it last time, the person who was painting it forgot and painted what was there before. So that was the challenge. It was, because they do it in the middle of the night.
So are you thinking they're not painting the parking lines, or they're not painting the yellow? Which one?
They're painted, there are different places that are painted yellow that really should be painted with white parking lanes.
So what do we do when it's already yellow?
Um, you take a power washer or-
You pressure, you take it off?
For, you try your best.
Okay.
Or they paint over it.
They paint white over it.
Paint over it, with white?
Well, in that situation, there, because there's a, a lay-down curb that was a driveway. So that, that's the challenge. And then they have the, the triangles that demarks where they're not supposed to park and, yeah.
Do you want to make a list of your concerns and get it to Austin? See what he says? Does anybody else have concerns about those specifically?
Well, I've got, somebody came in and, over there by the Sunshine Inn and the little apartment building that Bud Schutte, is that Main Street? What street is that?
Elm.
Elm. It's the parking there. And they were just complaining about that they're not marked well. That some people are taking up two spots, because it gets congested over there.
That's because the trays are too big.
You're talking about Elm Street between 7th and 8th?
I believe that's it, yeah.
8th and 9th.
8th and 9th.
The angle parking?
The angle parking on the south side.
And then there's the parking, parallel parking next to the apartment building. And when they're trying to maneuver that, because it's congested, you know, especially, you know, what they're gonna eat.
Okay, so you just want it to be marked?
Yeah, they would like it marked.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anything else for Street? Water and sewer. I wanted to have a committee meeting about setting up policy for when we know in advance that we're gonna shut off people's water, what the procedure needs to be, so it's documented somewhere. I understand when it's an emergency situation and you need to cut off water, those things we can't control. But when we know in advance, the day before, that we're gonna cut off water, we need to have a policy, and this is how we proceed. So I do want to set up a water sewer meeting to discuss that. All right.
Well, I had, you know, I talked, talked to several people about that. When I got the call from the Riley County emergency about the water was going to be shut off about 4:30 the evening, that it was gonna be shut off the next day. And so I either called or stopped down here and said, "You know, we need to let, like Sandy's pantry know, she's already closed, but if you get a hold of Alex at the theater, somebody at the theater, theater needs water. The fitness center needs water. All those places need water." It wasn't an emergency, because it was planned for 8 o'clock the next day. And I thought somebody from the city staff would notify those businesses. I mean, I could have notified them if I knew no one was going to take care of it. But, I mean, Alex was pretty upset, and I'm sure-
And you know, it could have been a situation, too, at the church by chance had a funeral that morning. I mean, you never know what was gonna happen. So we just need to have a policy to follow, so that people know what our expectations are. That's why we have a policy. These are our expectations.
Well, I can say a policy, but it seems like sometimes we need to use common sense.
Okay, but we don't have that policy in place to say, "You didn't adhere to policy." So you have to have the policy in place first. Okay, so we're gonna have that meeting. Parks and Rec, the only thing I wanted was, you know, they put in that cement on that entrance, it does have a dip. Are we gonna put a dip sign there? You know what I'm talking, there's a big dip there.
I didn't plan on putting a dip there, because I-
But the one going in's real bad.
That's what I mean, going in, not going out.
Yeah, going in's bad.
I mean, I guess we could. You shouldn't, I guess, well, yes, I mean, we could. That's not-
Well, I think it needs a dip sign there. You can go check it out. You can, feel free to check it out.
Was that up?
Where we put that new place for the drainage on the entrance to Lakeview, you know, you go in on the south side. It has a pretty big dip. So even a slowdown sign, something, because there is a dip there. Okay.
Have they got, have they got the pool fixed? I mean, wasn't there something with the, licking off the coating on the pool?
Right.
Had they fixed-
Once we, once we drain it, they're gonna come in and look at it.
What about the water line under the decking?
Hasn't been fixed.
Something we probably need to get on before pool opens.
Right.
Recontracting that out?
That would be the, that'd probably be the simplest way to do it.
Get contact, put the pool in.
A H R S.
It should be under warranty yet.
No.
Well, the coating should be.
That's what, they're gonna come and check. And not unless, from what I've been reading of the, the warranty information, unless we bought the extended warranty, it might not be under, under warranty. But the, the company that sold the lining is coming to look at it. They said they wanted to see what they could do with it.
When does the pool get drained?
Mid-April, mid to late April.
But we can fix the leak before that. So we need to fix the leak as soon as possible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is Park still?
What?
Is Park still?
Yes, we are. No, yeah, we are.
Okay. I, I had a few of the gals that do, that have daycare around Dargis Park, which they told me to make sure to tell the city guys they do a wonderful job of keeping that mode and nice and everything. So they, they wanted to make sure that-
Say that first.
Yeah, well, they, they mentioned that they would, they were wondering if, if there was a way that they could get some more baby swings, possibly, more in the future. Toddler swings. They, there are a few daycares around there, and they all kind of meet in the afternoon. I don't know if you've ever driven by there, but there's always kids running around all over in the, in the afternoon.
Dale had it in the budget or?
To put toddler swings in there?
I think he talked about that at one of the workshops.
I know, we, we, I thought he swapped out some swings already, though, that he, you know?
I don't know. There's an old, there's an old swing right there now that has, I think, two toddler swings.
Toddler and then four bigger kids.
Bigger kids, I think. But the, the thing is, I mean, the, a lot of the daycares that are there at that time, they've got younger little kids. little kids.
I know, they put down that, they put down that new, not bark, but the rubber. So it should be safer landing for the toddlers.
And they liked all that stuff. Yeah, they didn't have too many.
And I saw that we put the new pitcher mounds, that was for that, right? And we put the new fence around. They told us there was fence backstop. So I know we did some improvements in Dargitz Park, but...
That one and then the other little thing was, there were some trees there, they got, I think they died and got cut down or whatever. And just something to keep in mind, like next year when we're doing trees for Arbor Day or this year, they're wondering if maybe get some trees planted.
Well, that's a good idea.
Along that side. I mean, they won't get any use out of them probably for years, but it's just something gets thrown in their hand and gets...
Well, we'll know which kind of tree to get.
On which side did you say?
On the south side of the sidewalk there. I think there were some bigger ones.
You're talking about the southeast corner?
Yeah, southeast corner.
Where all those people kind of congregate, southeast corner?
For all their play equipment.
I know we have a covering there, you know, shelter.
There's some shade there. And then there's some other trees that got planted that are a little bit further to the north of that player area there.
Are they growing?
They're getting decent size, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it takes time. I mean, they know whatever gets planted, I mean, it'll be 20 years before anybody has enough shade out of it, just so eventually.
Okay. Anything else? Oh, right. Cemetery and Airport? Police and Fire?
Yes, I'd like to thank the police department for working on tagging and towing vehicles. And I guess they were gonna send a list to Dave to check on inoperative vehicles that are on property.
Did they tow them?
That's what said in the updates.
So where'd they tow them to? Where do they tow to?
If they tow them, they...
Is it to Bruce's?
No, the...
Down by the PD.
Down by the PD.
It's wedged to the superintendent's office.
Oh, in that open space that we bought?
They gotta tag them and they have a certain amount of days to...
To come get them?
They don't tow them at first. They tag them, they put that big orange sticker on the side, give them so many days, and then they come back and tow them. So they haven't towed anybody yet.
Okay. Yeah, that's a good first step, huh, darling? Anything else for Police and Fire? Admin and Finance?
Has anybody given any thought to nuisances in your wards? You looked around?
Nuisance houses?
And then also, Craig, have you looked into, we talked about tickets for violations and using municipal court? And have you checked on that?
Yeah, well, there's been some preliminary communications between myself and Austin and the mayor, who I think initially relayed that topic to me. I'm seeking a little bit more clarification as to maybe what's being considered or explored, as I wasn't quite clear at the first communication. So I guess it's a long way of saying, yes, it's being looked into and perhaps I can follow up, so as not to stall the matter. It's been about a week or so since the last communication.
I think I did, I sent you an email after the last meeting. No, after the workshop. I sent it after the workshop, sorry.
Last Monday, I...
Yeah.
Right, on the 20th.
That would make sense, yeah.
So, yeah, and I responded to that. But I think we just need to look at it a little bit further. I have some initial concerns about what was relayed to me. I know in some cities, it's, you know, oftentimes, if there's a code violation, it can and does go through municipal court to be prosecuted criminally. And there's, and I don't have the ordinance in front of me or the ordinances in front of me, but there should be applicable possible fines, maximum fines, that could be assessed at municipal court.
And then also civilly?
Well, that's not as common. And I guess I would want to look into that a little bit more, being done civilly. And I guess my initial thought was, or question was, why? If you have the criminal option to do it, which, I mean, I just, I think we need to have more conversations about why this... I'm not as familiar with that kind of a process versus the criminal prosecution pursuant to the ordinance and providing, you know, the due process, which our ordinances do provide, a response time for the person alleged to, the property owner alleged to own property that's a nuisance. If the city's considering changing that process, I mean, we need to look at that carefully. I think we need to be cautious about affecting due process rights of people in that situation. So I think further conversation, communication needs to happen.
Yeah, since it's only been a week since, or actually six days since I sent that email to them. We'll try to get that discussed on April 9th, okay? As far as some clarifications or some how to proceed.
Manhattan, the city of Manhattan would be a good one to look at, because they seem to really keep the city looking nice.
You think they have civil citations? Okay.
I don't think that they do, but I'll look into it.
And one other thing, the swarm water ordinance, we sent a draft of it to our city attorney, but there is one change we need to make, which Karen Hughes brought to my attention about. We have to specify in that ordinance what, when Dave Richardson has the authority without going to the planning commission. So we do need to have an ad hoc committee meeting, so that will be forthcoming as well before the next meeting, okay? Probably in next week. Okay. On the, anything else? On the appointments, they're on the very last page, 61, and I just need you to add, well, first I'll discuss on that airport board of adjustments. When we approved it, we approved it for a two-year term and it should have been a three-year term, so that's just a correction to extend that additional year, which is in accordance with the ordinance. The additional appointments, the first, the three listed there agreed to continue on in that little sentence there under cemetery board, and five members of which, that should read, mayor is the ex officio chairman, just so you know, that's how it should read. But also, Denny Schroller said that he would, Duane Enon said he did not want to serve again, and Denny Schroller said he'd be willing to serve. So he'll take the term of Duane Enon. And on the tree board, there's Sharon Kramer, Dennis Kramer is already on the board. And Bill Nelson said he did not want to continue on, so I am looking for someone to be on the tree board. Obviously, they have two, so they can proceed and just look at the documents we have. But if you have somebody that you would recommend to be on the tree board that has that area of expertise or whatever, or desires to learn more?
You know, Beth Skinner is always working around, if you ever talked to her.
Is she tree?
Well, you know what? She's knowledgeable, she gets out there and just ask her. Do they have to live in the city?
No, this...
She doesn't live in the city, but...
The tree board? It is, yeah, they do have to live in the city. Because that's why Dean Thomas...
Oh, Dean?
Can't be on it, because he was on it and he's not within the city and it is a city limits one. So if you think of someone in the city that would be willing to sort of let me know, but we'll go ahead and approve Sharon Kramer and all those listed, in addition to Denny Schroller on the cemetery board for tonight. So you can make a motion for the appointments as presented, including Denny Schroller on the cemetery board?
About, I move to approve the appointments on the cemetery board, which is Denny Schroller, and the tree board, which is...
No, you want to approve all three of those, plus Denny Schroller, on the cemetery board?
I want to, I want to move to approve the appointments for the different boards.
The boards as presented, including Denny Schroller on the cemetery board?
The boards as presented and Denny Schroller on the cemetery board.
Perfect. Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seven out of nine, thank you very much. So we'll get a tree board now that can talk about our down-down tree project. Okay. City Attorney, do you have anything at this time?
No.
Okay, and I do think we need to have an executive session, so let me grab my motion here. Unless someone has a minute. Here it is. Gina, would you like to read this motion? You want to pass that to Gina? So we want it for 20 minutes.
Okay.
And we want it to include the city attorney, the governing body, the city attorney and the city administrator, and probably make it for 24 minutes, returning at 9:25.
Okay. I move the city council recess into executive session pursuant to the non-elected personnel matters explanation KS 8754319B1. In order to discuss a performance matter involving a city employee, open meeting to resume in the city council chamber at 9:25 PM. The executive session will include the governing body and the city attorney and the city administrator.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right.
Anchor charlie.
Huh?
Oh, no, you know, I'm not...
All right, no executive decisions were made in executive session, we're continuing on with the regular meeting at this time. On Friday, I would like to go to this Municipal Training Institute on, it is hiring public safety officials, and it's in Leavenworth. It's $75. I would take the city car if available, but it's to, since we need to hire some public safety officials, I thought it might be helpful to understand what we need to be doing to encourage them to come to Marysville. So I'm willing to go if you guys are okay if I go. All right? And the second thing I wanted to do is to point out that in this governing body handbook is the essay in Ariana's picture, so make sure you look at it. And for Marysville, it shows that she won that. That being said, Darlene?
Seems like I had something I was gonna mention. I guess it just left me.
Okay. Bobby?
I already spoke about the parking, getting the parking marked over there. That was it.
Okay.
Oh, I know what it was. At Rotary today, there was a request on behalf of the Convention and Tourism Committee for the Rotary to donate to bicycle racks and, I don't know, the Convention and Tourism, have they mentioned anything to you, Austin?
Yes, and they wanted to put a plan together. They're not actually, they're not actually spending any money as of yet. They want to make sure they have the support before even, if they find they don't have people who want to do this, there's no point in bringing it to the council. They want to make sure that they would have the money before getting the approval of the council. Because they do want to have it, at least all those bike racks funded. So, and I think that's always a good plan to go, okay, people want this and they want to spend money on it. Council, what do you, do you want this? Do you not want this?
I just think Darlene's comment is that you have been discussing, you've been sitting in those meetings and discussing it, and you haven't communicated that to council that this is being discussed. Is that right, Darlene?
Well, yeah, I wondered if anyone...
Because he attends all the meetings.
Know about it, Austin?
Yeah, they've talked about it, yes.
Okay. Because the way it sounded was they were gonna raise, try to raise money for 20 bicycle racks and then come to council and like kind of blindsided us.
Not necessarily blindsided, because they could have, they could have showed up, somebody on Convention and Tourism could have just showed up and go, hey, what about bike, bicycle racks? And I couldn't have been in that conversation. And they said, we got 20 people with bike racks.
Again, it's communication, and if you're at a meeting that not all of us are at, we need you to communicate that, so we're not blindsided. Okay? Is that it? Okay. Bobby?
I did mine.
Gina? Terry?
I have nothing tonight.
Diane?
Well, I and Cindy went to a meeting on Friday in Manhattan for municipal finance.
All right.
Which was very interesting. And that's what this paper here is. They gave us this and it's on current commercial examples of property taxes for Manhattan and for current residential examples. And they send this out to, I don't know what they sent it out with, but anyway, they make this available to their citizens that show how the money is spent in Manhattan. And Cindy and I thought maybe it would be nice to either put it in the newspaper or maybe we could even put it in our city newsletter.
When we have it broken out for next year?
Yeah, for Marysville. This is Manhattan. We wouldn't want to put Manhattan's in there, but for Marysville.
Well, you know, in the budget book, they kind of, Austin already does kind of a breakdown about, you know, this.
Right.
It's in the budget book. You mean to Marysville. That's it. It also gives the breakdown by fund in here.
Yeah.
Have you looked at the budget book?
But this is for the citizens.
For the citizens.
I know.
This is for the citizens. But anyway, whatever, you know, to make them notice what we actually, where our money actually goes, so...
We did put that in the newsletter at one point.
Yeah, we did, we did put this in the newsletter. A breakdown between the county, the school and the city.
Okay. Well, it was just, Cindy and I talked about it.
I think this is helpful. I mean, the only thing is that it is kind of that dollar bill. The graphic I felt was actually easier to understand. You know, the guy that did this graphic for the first time was from Manhattan, and I thought it was so awesome, because when you look, if you look at a table of this and you look at a dollar bill like this, which is easier to understand?
Well, I don't know, because I didn't look at that, so I don't know, so...
But I think, anyway, I understand what you're saying, just as long as we communicate that to the people.
Right.
And that's why we did this right after our budget was finalized.
Yeah.
We put this in the newsletter.
So, but anyway, but anyway, some other things that we're talking about was cash basis law, which was in this. And if anybody wants a copy of this, you know, it's here.
That's what you went over?
This is what the handout that they gave us, or that we went over, and it was a PowerPoint. And revenue sources, budgeting, important dates, revenue estimating, expenditure estimating, budget monitoring, fraud red flags, which I don't think we have, because we really keep track. But these are for smaller cities, you know, there is, there's a lot of that going on.
overlap of responsibilities.
Yes. And selecting an auditor, we change every five years, which we just did, so that's something we're doing very well around here, so... And priority-driven budgeting, and they had information on that. So I think Marysville, it looks like we're doing things very well here, so I think we're on top of things the way it sounds.
Did it help you understand the budgeting process a little bit?
Yes, it was very interesting, so...
So you're anxious to get started in 2019?
Oh, yes, yes. And Cindy and I, it was a good time, because Cindy could explain a lot of things that were going on too, because, you know, she knows what's going on, so, you know, it's great to visit and...
Where'd you go to?
We went to Manhattan.
Manhattan.
The city hall, yeah, so...
Did Bernie give it?
Huh?
Did Bernie give that training?
No, he did that sheet you're looking at, though, and Cindy sent us the thing we wanted.
Oh, Eric?
He was there.
He was there?
Eric Smith, I guess, that's his pictures on here, so... No, he was, he was there. The other guy was there, but he didn't do it.
Bernie has done some training with the league conferences and stuff. He's real good.
Yeah. This guy, this guy, after he quit clearing his throat all the time and he got settled into it, it was okay. So this guy kept clearing his throat. But geez, but no, it was, it was very good. And we had a really nice lunch and it was from 10 to 2, and they got us out of there at 2 o'clock. at 2 o'clock and we came home and...
Awesome.
So I really enjoyed it and felt like I learned a lot.
You look at this and look at this and tell me which you prefer.
Yeah.
Take some time.
Okay.
And then we'll put it in the newsletter.
And that was in the, that was in the, that was in the budget, you say?
Yeah, in the budget book at the front. I didn't mean to slam you down like that, I'm sorry.
Well, it is nice that it shows the commercial example too.
Yeah, one side, one side's the commercial and one side's the residential, but that's cool. Well, I think, I think I've got last year's, but I think I have Denny's copy of last year's.
You don't have a current budget book?
I don't know what I have. I don't have it with me, I don't think.
Okay.
I don't think they gave me one. I think, I think, I think I had, I think I had Denny's copy.
And, yeah, that's it. And then at the front, it does show, you know, based on our tax rate, commercial versus residential, so...
Yeah. So, but anyway, I think it was a very worthwhile, very worthwhile workshop that we went to.
And it does have a breakdown by fund that we draw.
Yeah. Okay, so anyway.
The budget book is very important.
Yeah, so thank you for letting me go.
Thanks for reporting. Kev?
No.
Jason?
I have one thing. I am, I got my KRWA conference this week, so I'll be out of the office tomorrow through Thursday, just so everybody knows.